Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, Met and Council Chambers on Thursday, August 22, 2024 at 6:00 PM, 6:04 PM. For the purpose of discussing an ordinance to amend a zoning ordinance relative to business neighborhood zoning, Section 3-1, Table of Principal and Accessory Use Regulations. Notice of this meeting was posted on August 5, 2024, at 10:45 AM. With us from the Committee of the Whole are all members. Joining us from the Committee of the Whole are Councilors Prozinski, Councillor Merkel, Councillor Stock, Councillor Gerzlow, and Council President Hatworth. Also joining us for the meeting are Mayor Pangalo, Lisa Peterson, who's the Chief of Staff, Amanda Chancola, the Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, and Beth Renard, the City Solicitor. So this is, just to catch everybody up, this is kind of the end of the zoning process. Again, zoning ordinances have a time limitation that is dictated by the state law. And so this has been through a public hearing with the Planning Department or Planning Board. The Planning Board did return their recommendation. It came back to the council, and the council put it into this committee for another round of questions and answers. And then it will go later tonight for a first passage, if that's what the will of the committee is. So I'd like to start with Mayor Pangalo, who did submit this ordinance amendment, so that he can kind of introduce it and the reasoning behind it, and what each of the amendment uses are.
First, let me say I do apologize for not having been able to attend the joint public hearing. We had a teacher contract negotiation session that evening as well. But I appreciate the chance to be with you tonight. I have some prepared remarks that I'm going to share, because they try to speak directly to a number of the concerns that several of the councilors have brought to me about this, so I'm going to try to speak then as specifically as possible. This is a proposal to allow for greater walkable neighborhood scale, small business opportunities in Salem, especially outside of our downtown. You know, so much of our commercial space in Salem is downtown or is in places that are only accessible by car. So much of it is filled by the kinds of businesses that serve our visitors and tourists, more than our residents. So the proposal that was filed by the Council in May seeks to address that. I think I mentioned to some of you that over the course of my campaign last year, I heard from many residents and neighborhoods around Salem that they wanted to see more commercial options close to where they were, not just have to come downtown, not just have to be able to get in a car and drive to Highland Avenue or some other distant location from where they lived. They were frustrated that they couldn't easily get to these third places, these businesses that help vibrant neighborhoods flourish. And I think we've heard from, I know I have, and I think councilors have also heard from other residents in recent days, expressing similar sentiments. So this past spring, we reviewed the code and identified several of these kinds of uses where we could make changes in the B1 zones. In all, and you have maps of that zone with you this evening, they represent 2.4% of the city's 13,886 parcels of property. After that, the Planning Department worked to help determine the kinds of regulations that might be appropriate for each of these uses, to ensure a more thoughtful approach to these amendments. So for some of these proposed uses, a special permit or a license from another city board, or even two are required, which means that there are guardrails around some of the uses as well. And I want to really emphasize that all of these changes are to existing commercial zones. These are modifications to current business districts. It doesn't change the size or locations of those districts. It doesn't apply to residential districts. These are only use changes within the existing B1 districts. So the first change is in regards to indoor commercial recreation by special permit. So this includes places like yoga and fitness studios, martial arts studios. This proposed amendment would allow the use in the B1 zone by special permit, which is identical to how it's allowed in other business zones, including the B2 and the B4. For comparison, this use is also allowed by special permit in the B1 equivalent zone in the city next door in PBD. The change allows for restaurants with service of alcohol by special permit. But these are not bars, they're not packaged stores. These are restaurants, not dissimilar to many of the pre-existing and non-conforming neighborhood restaurants in our B1 zones that we all know and love. Salem's Retreat, Dot and Raise, both about a block from my house, Mercy Tavern, or the pig's eye before it, the VFW, the late great Witch's Brew, whatever may follow, Doobies, The Tin Whistle, and Castle Hill. I think we can all agree, I would hope, that these places are amenities and assets to our communities and not detractions. This ordinance change would allow future such neighborhood restaurants to open after securing a special permit and a liquor license, both of which are points in the permitting process through which restrictions on things like hours and noise can additionally be set on those uses. And again, looking at other communities around us for comparison, these types of establishments are allowed by special permit in PBD's BN2 Neighborhood Convenience Business Zone. The PBD Code, incidentally, expressly observes that that zone exists to, quote, "provide for uses including small retail and service establishments, serving the needs of adjacent neighborhoods and oriented to pedestrian traffic." I think if PBD can do it, surely Salem can do it, too. Next, the proposed change creates a new category for smaller grocery stores, distinguishing them from larger supermarkets, which are defined elsewhere in the code. Supermarkets would continue to not be allowed by right or by special permit in the B1 zones, separate use that is prohibited in the neighborhood business zones. The ordinance does allow for smaller-scale bodegas and neighborhood groceries by right, based on this change, in the B1, B2, B4, B5, and I zones, which is exactly identical to how our zoning currently treats small-scale retail stores. This is basically the premise, is that similarly sized businesses that sell goods or sell foods should be treated similarly. I would add, this change also comes with the favorable recommendation of our Food Policy Council, which used it as a way to help address food access by allowing smaller-scale grocery stores within walking distance of residents. Next, this change allows for small family daycare use by right in the B1 zone. Right now, small family daycare is allowed by right in every residential zone, including the R1, but it's not allowed in the B1. So in other words, we have a business use that's allowed by right in every residential zone, but not allowed at all in a business zone. The availability of accessible childcare right now, for many of us who've had to try to find it over the last several years, presents a serious challenge. The scarcity of it is a serious challenge for parents and caregivers who need care in order to work. We should be pushing for changes like this that broaden opportunities for childcare in our community. And again, for comparison, this is a use that is allowed in the neighborhood business zone next door in PBD. Lastly, home occupation. These are folks like tutors and accountants and similar professions who work out of a home office. This is currently not allowed in the B1 zone, but in our residential zones, we allow it by special permit. The inconsistency is that we allow for residential in the B1 zone. So think of an apartment or a condo on the upper floor of a commercial building with a business downstairs. A resident in that apartment or condo shouldn't be precluded from engaging in the same low-intensity home occupation as their neighbor in a residential district next door. So this change creates a level playing field for those residents of our city. And again, it's allowed in PBD and in Beverly, both by right, not by special permit. We also know that there are places where many of these uses are already happening in the B1, pre-existing to zoning, currently non-conforming with the code. Earlier this summer, at the council's request, the Planning Department provided an analysis, which was sent to you, of where we have these types of properties. Based on the assessor's database, 27 properties in the B1 zones around Salem were found to have use codes reflective of the uses that are in this zoning ordinance amendment. It's about 8% of the parcels in the B1. Land use codes don't directly align with uses in the zoning code, so there's potentially even more places than that where these uses are taking place in B1 zones. I would add, though, that whether or not there are existing non-conforming businesses in the B1 zones, it's immaterial to the reason why this ordinance change was submitted to you in the first place in May. Whether there's precedent or not, the motivation here isn't, we should allow this because it's already happening. The motivation is we want to cultivate the opportunity for more neighborhood-scale, walkable small businesses and microenterprises. Places to support our residents, build stronger neighborhood connections between residents, and create more local jobs. This approach to neighborhood commercial is not new. A 1998 report by the Mid-America Regional Council noted, quote, "Neighborhood-oriented commercial development can encourage walking for errands in residential areas." More recently, the Urban Sustainability Directors Network said that, quote, "Comfortable pedestrian access to stores, restaurants, and other businesses commingled with restaurants with neighborhoods reduces the need to own cars and encourages social connections. It can increase livability, create new jobs, maintain or increase property values, and enhance the community while using existing infrastructure." So these are the changes that are before you. They come from the requests of our constituents for smaller neighborhood commercial mom-and-pop businesses that they want near where they live. They make us more consistent with cities and towns around us and what they're doing when it comes to neighborhood commercial. And they come with the unanimous recommendation of, in the case of the grocery store use, the Food Policy Council, and the case, in all the cases of our Planning Board. Well, I'll end with this. Like a lot of residents in Salem, I grew up within a couple hundred feet of a B1 zone. I now live within a couple hundred feet of a B1 zone. I'm raising my kids there. We walk to the small businesses along North Street, and it's one of the things we love most about our neighborhood. These changes won't negatively impact the character of my neighborhood, or of any neighborhood that abuts a B1 zone. The intention, and I believe the ultimate result, will be to improve them. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions.
Do any councilors have questions for the mayor at this point? I do want to add a few definitions, which I sent an email earlier with backup material on the shared drive. It's definitions that I think everyone needed a little bit further clarification on. One is the definition of a small family daycare, and this is derived from the Mass General Law, which defines a large family daycare. And so a small family daycare means that it's five or fewer, or less than six children. So that's the definition there. For a grocery store, it's in our ordinance, it's defined as not exceeding 15,000 square feet. And in the backup material, there were some examples of grocery stores versus supermarkets. So Steve's Market on Margin Street is 7,692 square feet, not exceeding the 15,000. Daily Table on Lafayette Street is 4,200 square feet. So those are, you know, much, much smaller than the maximum. Market Basket is 104,900 square feet. So it's huge. That is a supermarket. That would not be happening in the B1. And then on the lower scale, the Crosby's on Canal Street is 30,484 square feet. So again, that's too large to be classified as a grocery store in a B1. So let me see, what else needed a definition? We also want to clarify that in the amendments that were given to us, we need to include the word indoor commercial recreation. I guess it does say, you know, commercial recreation. Oh, no, no, it doesn't. We need to add indoor commercial recreation, because that was the intent, indoor. There's two different line items. There's an indoor recreation and an outdoor recreation. So we're only changing the indoor commercial recreation. And then the other one is the definition of home occupation. And I think that that, someone may have a sharper definition of it, but it's like an accountant or a lawyer, where you have maybe one person coming in at a time. You don't have people lined up. You're not also, you're also not creating commercial products to sell. But Beth, do you have a better? Okay.
Let me take questions, or I can sit?
Yeah, if anybody has any other questions, Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Wholeheartedly support this. I think conversations about walkable amenities is something I hear about and talk with residents all the time. I am curious about, why are we distinguishing between supermarkets and convenience stores and, you know, small grocery stores? I think, you know, I used to be on Canal Street, I was able to walk to, you know, a very close grocery store, and now I can't. I think that, yeah, just curious about the kind of distinguishing there.
So I think the intention was to create smaller-scale commercial activities, and the supermarket is just too large a scale of a kind of entity to have in a B1. You know, we're fortunate that, I think that there are other business districts also that can accommodate them that aren't available to people, but really the hope is to create opportunities, honestly, like the Daily Table and like Steve's, like a lot of the corner markets that many people who grew up in Salem were able to walk to before zoning codes were established, and the bodegas that also support, I think, the cultural food history of the changing populations of the city as well.
Ms. Renard?
So home occupation is defined as a professional office and other home occupation involving the use of a room or rooms in a dwelling, carry-on activities in which goods, wares, are not commercially created.
Is that clear? Councillor Prozinski?
Thank you, Chair Marcella. There's a liquor component involved in this also, that I'm kind of curious about, because I know that liquor licenses are issued by the state, and I'm not exactly clear if an establishment wants to serve, one of these establishments wants to serve liquor. How do they go about getting a license? I think that we're already capped at so many licenses in this city. So, and I know there are several types of licenses. There's a full liquor license, there's beer and wine licenses, there are seasonal licenses, which the city can issue, and there are cordials licenses. I'm just curious that if one of these neighborhood stores decides to sell liquor, how do they go about getting the premise, and are they available? If we're already capped, you know, what's the waiting period and so forth? Because I think that's an issue that I think a lot of residents have about liquor establishments being in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's a fair question. So first, the sale of liquor on the premises is for restaurants, so it's to be consumed on-premises, not a store. This isn't changing packaged stores or anything like that. Actually, I would defer to the city solicitor to be able to speak to kind of our current situation with a number of licenses and how a business can go about getting one of those licenses. You're correct, it is capped by state law, and it's hard to get a license right now.
Right. So the way licenses move around the city of Salem is they transfer from one location to the next. So if you were looking to acquire a license for a new location, you could either buy one from an existing business and move it, or you could apply for a home. I'm losing, I'll just speak loud. You could apply for a home petition, or you could get a seasonal license. The seasonal licenses, you apply directly through the license, the run from April to January, seasonally. So those months that you get offered a license, one day's. So you either buy one, you get one transferred from one place to another, you apply a home petition, or you get a seasonal license.
So then my question, I guess, would be, if someone applies for it, would it be an on-premises or off-premises? And who makes the rules of whether somebody can engage in on-premises drinking, or whether or not they can buy the liquor there and then take it out and take it home only?
Change here, in the establishment.
It's on-premises only, restaurants, the consumption of alcohol on-premises. That allows for the consumption of alcohol on-premises.
Can I ask if you're trying to clarify between a packaged store and a restaurant? Is that?
My question is, if you're in a neighborhood, are people coming into the neighborhood to drink in your neighborhood, or are they coming in to buy something and take it home? So I think there's, I think there's pros and cons to both, arguments to both sides of that. And I was just digesting them, and I imagine we would probably go neighborhood by neighborhood. And the liquor license would be issued by, it would be something that would be, because we only have so many, it would be something that would be issued by the state, not something that would be issued by the city, by special permit.
Unless there was a home, we have several restaurants that have special access, those are tied to locations. For example, those have home, special access later, gets sent to the state.
These are not, so this is changing restaurants. So you think about, like, if you think about the Tin Whistle, if somebody's going to go and sit and have a hamburger and have a beer with a hamburger or something at the restaurant, they're not taking it out with them. They're not allowed to, not a liquor store.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Watsonville?
Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you, Chair. Just one question clarifying from the mayor. Mayor, did you say that 2.4% of the properties in Salem fall under the B1 and currently?
2.4% of the parcels.
2.4% of the parcels?
Right.
In the commercial B1 zone?
2.4% of all the parcels in the city are in B1 zones.
2.4%.
These blue areas equal 2.4%.
Yeah, thank you.
Parcels, not the square footage, the parcels. So condo unit is a parcel.
Yeah, however many high floors or whatever else, yeah, it's just by parcel ID. So 2.4% of all the parcels in Salem. It's a pretty small number. Thank you.
Councillor Gerzlow?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on the liquor. Does Salem have a BYOB policy?
Restaurants, ordinance that prohibits brown bag.
Not allowed.
We have an ordinance that prohibits brown bag, so we just said, okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Marcella. Not being a member of the committee, I just want to express support for this. I think it's common sense to clean up all the inconsistencies that the mayor pointed out that exist here. I appreciate the Food Policy Council's supporting this, and also really the point that it creates a sense of community and social connections in neighborhoods, which is what we love about Salem, and the local places that we get to walk to and enjoy. Thank you.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Marcella. So I'm glad we clarified the liquor license, because unless it's a transferred license, it has to still come before this body. Home petition has to go to the state. And, you know, at least since I've been a councillor, we've had instances where home petition has gone forward and some haven't. I am deferring to you, should I make a motion to include the definitions, or is that something we'll do?
We'll do that after public comment.
Okay.
Yep. Anyone, any other councillor with a question? Okay. Why don't we take public comment at this point? If you're here for public comment in the room, you can approach the microphone, and if you'd like to give your name and address. If you're joining us over Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. Go ahead, just speak right into the microphone so that everybody can hear at home. Yeah.
My name is Allison Draper. I have lived on Derby Street for the past 10 years, and the Derby Street neighborhood is just one of the nine zones that's in the B1 zone regulation proposal, but it is one of the largest, and I believe when you look at the map, it is the most neighborhood-esque of all of the different areas that we're looking at today. So I thank you for your time. I reached out to a couple of you via email, and I appreciate your responses very much. And it's nice to see faces in person. The historic, oh, so I'm going to speak just directly to the Derby Street neighborhood, since it is my home and I value it very much. The historic Derby Street neighborhood is markedly different in character, building stock, noise buffering capacity, traffic flow, and parking compared to other areas in the city that are currently regulated by the provisions in the proposed amendments. The buildings in the Derby Street B1 zone are among the oldest and most beautiful in the city, many of which are historic wooden structures with limited ability to buffer noise and are heightened fire risks. The recent expansion of sidewalks, which is lovely as we've met ADA compliance, combined with increased traffic due to the potential new businesses, has the potential of impeding emergency vehicle access. These characteristics are contrast, sharp, I'm sorry, these characteristics contrast sharply with areas designated such as B1 and, I'm sorry, B2 and B5, such as Highland Avenue and downtown Salem, which allow for indoor recreation and alcohol service that you've mentioned. And I want to pause there for a second, because I keep hearing yoga studio mentioned as the type of indoor recreation. I wonder what other types of indoor recreation might fall under that category that might have a larger volume and impact on noise to the building that it's in. The B1 distinction is intended for business neighborhoods, a distinction that is inherently seeking the balance between commercial activity and residential character. And I acknowledge that is not an easy task. While some of the proposed changes could provide services to the community, like a retail grocery that the mayor mentioned, and increasing accessibility to food is something that those neighborhoods are seeking, but permitting alcohol service raises other concerns. Given the differing impact of these changes, I recommend that the amendments are reviewed separately to ensure a balance of consideration for each issue. I appreciate the mayor's goal of increasing accessibility, but I urge you to take a look at each ordinance to allow a more thorough review of its impact, particularly regarding safety, to ensure that the residents are adequately informed and able to participate in a meaningful discussion about their neighborhood. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you very much.
I'm also an Allison, and I support everything that Allison Draper just said. I'm Allison Pekel. I reside at 29 Carlton Streets, so I'm also directly in the area that we are speaking of today. I'm coming from a little bit of a different perspective, so I am a homeowner on Carlton Street. So I'm kind of approaching this from a perspective of, you know, Derby Street is one of the reasons why I moved to Salem. Like, I love how vibrant our city is. I love our restaurants and our small businesses. It's why I moved here. But one of the things I noticed when Mayor Pangalo was speaking was, we keep mentioning walking to local businesses. You have your home, and then you're walking to those local businesses. I love doing that as well, but when you look at the map, it also takes on a significant portion of the side streets. So you do have, I would say, you know, a couple houses down on Carlton Street is also impacted by this new ordinance, which also includes my home. So my main concern is that, while I love walking to these businesses on Derby, and I don't want to be a non-proponent of change and new businesses, I also agree with Ally, what Ally suggested, that, you know, I think we need to look at this ordinance in smaller chunks, look at how the impact on the individual basis could impact the homeowner that this business might go in next to. My larger suggestion would be actually that maybe we restrict this area to not include those side streets at all, and maybe we just restrict it to Derby Street in general. As someone who works from home, this could have a huge impact on my life if, say, a daycare or a restaurant that serves alcohol, for example, goes in next to my home. Also, just, you know, as much as I love tourist season, and I love fall, and I love Halloween, again, it's a major reason why I moved here, the ability to go to my home and go to a quiet place that's a refuge for me is huge for my sanity. And I know it sounds probably silly, I'm two houses down from Derby Street, but I can't hear anything on Derby Street when I'm in that garden. So it's, it would be a huge impact to me if we move that down further onto those residential streets. So, you know, I'm urging you to vote no on the proposed ordinance as it is drafted. I'm not saying we give up on this entirely. Again, I think there's a lot that's in this that we want. I just think it may benefit from some additional revision and thinking through the impact to the existing neighborhood, because it is so residential in the area of impact. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your time, and I know how hard you work, and I'll try not to keep you long. My main concerns, as I've stated a few times before with these, is, number one is the liquor licenses, and usually the late night hours that come with it. It's unusual. It's, um, unusual when they won't give a liquor license till one o'clock in the morning. And these, these B1 zones are so close to residential, they're designed to be for residential use. They're not designed to be adverse to the neighborhood. And I remember a time when Derby Street probably had about 20 liquor establishments on it. It was, uh, you couldn't make it down the whole street if you did the old Derby Street shuffle as, as younger people. Uh, it just wasn't possible. And with the B1 not allowing, uh, restaurants with liquor licenses anymore, it made quality of life a lot better along Derby Street. And, uh, as much as it affects my neighborhood up in Vinin Square, you know, I'm a longtime Salem resident and Derby Street's near and dear to all of us. And I really think it's the epicenter of all this is, uh, it's going to get hit the hardest by, because of the amount of tourist use and, um, the amount of competition amongst restaurants and those kinds of things. I think there's a, a lot of chance of more restaurants with liquor licenses open along Derby Street. That being said, when they close at one o'clock in the morning, it usually means employees don't leave for probably two o'clock in the morning. And the, uh, there were businesses, as they should, show their customers their pretty face, but the neighborhood usually sees, uh, the rear of, the rear end of the business and it's not as pretty as the front and the activities aren't as pretty and they're more adverse to quality of life. And, uh, I'm not speaking hypothetical, I'm speaking through, you know, probably 35 years of experience living in Vinin Square and having the back of stores 100 feet away from my house. So I know what people who may not know what they're in for or in for. I know what it's been like in the past and I know what it's like now and it's gotten better. B1 zoning, things were grandfathered. Might want to redo the definitions or relook at the definitions of, um, grocery store. And because the size of it, in Vinin Square, at one time we had a Stop and Shop behind us. And it was grandfathered, it wasn't allowed in B1, but it was grandfathered from many years before. And when you get a Staples like say now, you get one truck that unloads, comes in and unloads and it's gone. With grocery stores, you get many deliveries and many trucks and they don't unload all the way. You get an 18 wheelers, probably, we used to probably get 10 a day into the night and into the morning. At a time when I didn't know they weren't supposed to deliver all night. And they come with 20 pallets on the truck, but one goes to that store and then another one goes to another store and so on. They don't just come and unload one truck and you get that with, with every different type of delivery, bread, meat, whatever. It's a lot more. And so it's louder and messier back there with that kind of delivery versus something like a Staples that say now, which is allowed in B2. So grocery stores is, that's my kind of concern with that. There's going to be a lot more deliveries and especially on Derby Street, it's going to be in the front because it's hard to get around back there. So that with all these bump outs and bike lanes and all those kinds of things and residential parking, they're, they're going to be parking in the street. You know, if you've seen it going along Derby Street and had to wait for delivery truck as it is now. My concern with daycare is we had on the zoning review committee, which I spent about eight years on with Mark Bobrowski, who's the, the state zoning expert. We were concerned because people compared it to the schools when school gets out. Cars double and triple park picking up kids and dangerous. And I lived near Horace Mann at the time and I saw picking up my own kids, a lot of near misses. Um, B1 is a lot of main streets, Boston Street, Bridge Street, Derby Street. And that kind of thing happening with a daycare was the main concern for safety. Versus a B2, say such as the Walmart on Highland Avenue where you have a whole parking lot to park and pick up your kids, those kinds of things. So this, this has a tendency to affect the residential quality of life. I know yoga, yoga studio doesn't seem that bad, but we had, we had a boxing club in Vinin Square for a while beside Staples. Didn't know at the time, didn't do my homework, didn't know it wasn't allowed there. From five o'clock in the morning on, it was like a nightclub was there. There was a lot of music with the, with the boxing, you know, and, and exercising. Couldn't figure it out for a while till I got up and took a walk in the morning and, and the neighbors, especially the condos behind me were kind of concerned about that. That can happen, but it can be controlled a little bit better. So to me, the, the residential quality of life is my main concern. And three of these main changes in essence turned B1 into B2 without a zoning change. But if it was a zoning change, every butter and air butter would have to have been notified from B1 to B2. Because it's being put into it, no butter and no secondary butter got a notice about this. So I'm surprised there's this many people here tonight because the word just isn't around town about this. And I certainly didn't have time to go around dropping off flyers, you know, with, with family time, of course. And my last thing, as much as I have residential concerns, I'm concerned about the businesses. The mayor mentioned and rightly so many grandfathered businesses, uh, the VFW, Mercy, Tin Whistle, Doobies, those things. And they are grandfathered. And they, they bought their businesses, most of them knowing they were grandfathered, knowing that no new competition was allowed. And I don't think it's fair to them. And my restaurant is Fantasy Highland and I don't want to see that to close. But if, if all of a sudden they get much more competition, it's going to water down their business, especially during the slower time of the year. And I'm concerned about some of them eventually closing or being sold because they can't maintain their business. Because they bought knowing there was no competition allowed, they were grandfathered and now all of a sudden we're changing the rules on them. But that, that change will affect them, you know, more than we realize. And again, I will say it's not a one size fits all. The old part of the city versus Vinin Square, where I live, it works fairly well. Where we go R1 residential, B1, and then we cross Route 1A and we get to B2. So I know you mentioned people wanting an experience to be able to walk from their neighborhood. We have that. We have probably, you know, 50 acres of B2 with 10 places we can walk to that have liquor licenses. There's no need whatsoever to put them across the street backing up to the residential neighbors. So and our, since this is not needed in our neighborhood, everything you're asking for, we already have. Some neighborhoods may not and that's, they have their concerns. So in the, in the old days when we did the North River Canal corridor zoning change and we did the zoning review committee off and on for some eight years, they formed a committee, they had meetings, they sat down, they batted ideas around and then they came to a consensus. So I'm a little taken aback sometimes when people talk about our zoning being antiquated because we reviewed it for eight years with the best expert in the state at zoning. And every single line of zoning we went through, some things were added because they were by law to the state and we had to add them. And some things we moved around and decided not to move around. And those meetings were well attended by businessmen, lawyers, developers, counselors. And then we came to a consensus and we voted on that. And now, just a few years later, that's considered antiquated by some people. So I, I wish we would do a little bit more work on that. And if we're going to change, that we do what we did in the past, form a committee and hear people and get people on the committee and really look at this, not just do it the way we did, have it in, the only notice in the paper was in the back of the paper. People weren't, nobody was involved in these decisions and I, I just wish we could do it the way we did it in the past. And with that, I'll yield, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room with a comment? Anyone? Wait, hold on.
Hello. My name is Chelsea Ventura and I live at 33 Carlton Street. Um, this, while it's a great, wonderful idea, I agree that we should expand businesses in Salem because we have a great community here. This would absolutely negatively impact me being a resident of the community. Um, I used to live on 131 Essex Street, uh, right next to the PBD Essex Museum. And I had a, um, parking lot in the back, which was great. But during the month of October, it was impacted greatly and tourists would still use it. And I would have to put cones in my spot whenever I would leave. Um, and I just, I see this being an issue if this does get passed. Because we already have a lot of traffic. Um, we already have a lot of that with the VFW, with Mercy, with all of the buildings that are already on Derby Street. And I didn't even learn about this ordinance amendment until maybe like two weeks ago. So it was very abrupt to learn about this. Um, I feel like a lot of the other, um, residents in our, in that neighborhood, Carlton and Derby have also been kind of taken aback by this because, um, it's going to cause an issue for us for parking accessibility. A lot of us work outside of Salem. I myself work at McLean Hospital in Belmont and my commute to work in the morning is great, but not so much on the way back home. And, um, if I have to kind of worry about finding parking, um, just like a tourist would come October, that's not going to put me in the best mental state to take care of my patients. So I just, I urge everybody to kind of think about each of these different components a little bit more thoroughly, like Ally and Allison had already brought up. Um, and I also agree with everything that the gentleman before me has voiced about how, um, this has just all been kind of, I guess it seems like maybe brought up, voted on, communicated within this kind of small, um, com- committee. But I feel like the residents don't know about it, um, like they should. And that maybe there could be more communication and collaboration so that we can all agree, so that we're all enjoying and thriving in the community in which we live. Because I do think that as much as we want to bring businesses in, we also want to benefit the residents in our neighborhood and not overlook that. And I do feel like that's been overlooked. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question since you're, uh, because we hear this a lot, that people in Salem don't know what's going on. How do you get your news about what's happening in Salem?
My neighbors.
Okay. So, thank you. Thank you. I will say that, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but I do have a newsletter that comes out every single week. I talk about all of this stuff. I talk about everything that comes before the council. I have over 530 subscribers and I also put it out on social media. I think I'm doing the, the work to get the, the word out. And I've also, I also get a lot of feedback from people when they read it about what's going on. Not sure what we can do to get the word out. It's, our meetings are on SATV, our meetings are on YouTube. There's several counselors that have newsletters and the mayor puts out a newsletter every two weeks. I, I would love some information from the people in Salem about how they want their information delivered. Because we do, we do try. We don't have the greatest local newspaper and I don't think a lot of people read it, but that's, it's not our fault. I mean, I, I, so I'm, I'm, I would love, as people think about this, to tell us how to get the information to them because we're pushing out a lot of information, but it's got to be read.
To address that, I think in this situation, I think, um, we had been talking about this internally as well. Like how could we get the word out about this? Because we were having the same issue. I think in this case, maybe a postal mailer would have been helpful to actually get in people's mailboxes.
To everyone in Salem?
No, just I think, well, I think specifically for the people that would have been impacted by the zoning change. I think that would have been, I think, helpful so that we could have all kind of come together and think about this and talk about it. Um, I, I did learn about it through social media, so that is working. Um, but I think for those of us who would have been directly impacted, I think a, a paper mailer would have been helpful. If that's helpful to you.
Okay, no, no, thank you.
We appreciate the effort. We really do.
Yep. Well, thank you. Counselor Driscoll, did you have something?
Chair, uh, it's just that we do post it. I do do a lot of posting on the neighborhood Facebook page, the, um, historic Derby Street. It's on that. Happening in the neighborhood. Hello, it's the historic Derby. I'll have, they post, we post, um, different things happening in those. They do hold monthly meetings. You, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Tim Draper. I, I do not have any prepared remarks tonight. Just, uh, in addition to some of these other suggestions that were made, I know that Salem has the ability to reach out to specific neighborhoods when there is going to be a specific event that is going to impact, you know, what's, for example, Derby Street from Daniel Street down to Beckett. So it seems as if the technology is there in order to inform the residents of a particular event that may take place in their neighborhood via text message or phone call. I would say, um, nowadays that seems to be a very effective method of getting the word out to the residents. I know a lot of people, you, I, I, I agree, Facebook is a great tool, but a lot of people don't use Facebook. As you noted, we may not have the best paper on the North Shore or in the area. And I think sometimes, um, you know, people forget. Or, uh, I do know you have to sign up for the Salem News, you know, in order to get information. But I, I, I do think text messages and voicemails are an effective means of getting, getting the word out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in Zoom land that would like to make a comment? If you can use the raise hand feature. Not seeing anyone right now. Anyone else in the room that would like to make a comment? Okay. I just want to make, I, I have not kind of weighed in yet. I've been so focused on Ward Three because that's my own ward. And we have a B1 area that goes from, uh, the Tin Whistle basically to Doobies. And it was drawn like that because those businesses were there and so it created this zone. The B1 zone excludes a daycare, yet right on the other line, like it's a, it's a small area, but you go right next door and there's a home daycare, same street, same congestion. So to me, the home daycare considerations of it's too crowded, it's too busy. It, it's, it's five or fewer children. It's, we need, we need daycare right now. We are desperately in need of daycare options. So I just want to put that out there. The other B1 zone that Ward Three has is just right near, um, the Collins Middle School on Essex Street, where the CVS and the auto parts store is. That used to be a Crosby's Market. We used to be able to walk to that market. Everyone in the neighborhood used that market. It's right abutting Salem Heights. It was a full grocery store. When they left, we lost that use and we are desperately in need of a grocery store. So as a result of that, and as a result of these kinds of exclusions from zoning, it forces people in their cars and it forces them to drive up Highland Avenue. And then everyone complains about all the traffic on Highland Avenue, but that's where the grocery stores are. Right? So we've forced people to go into their cars. And I think this is kind of where people are coming from in the neighborhoods of creating more walkable, convenient places that they can, that they can just use every day. I think that, you know, there's so many complaints about tourist shops that we see in, in Salem, that we're losing our great stores downtown and they're being replaced by witch stores. Right? But we're also not allowing our neighborhoods to have the conveniences that they need in the neighborhoods to be vibrant communities. Right? The Doobies is great. The Tin Whistle is great, but it's also not a function of zoning to control competition. And so that kind of gives me pause when we say it's not fair to them and it's going to create competition. That's my opinion. I really need to think hard about that particular statement because that's not the purpose of zoning for us as counselors, to control competition among businesses. That, that feels weird. That feels actually very strange to me. I understand that the, the message behind it and I understand we want to support our businesses, but it feels weird to me that we're using zoning to control competition. But that's where I'm coming from. I, I still really do support this. I still really think that with it, with the, um, the ZBA, have neighborhoods going to ZBA meetings and saying, either if it's on a side street, no, these are residences and this doesn't fit, this belongs on Derby Street, there's still controls there, right? You still need to go to the licensing board to get permission to get a liquor license. Those are all public meetings also, and they do take into consideration public comment and how it affects the neighborhood. That's the whole point of these, of these boards. So, I mean, that's, right now, that's, that's what I'm thinking about this. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Marcello. We share the B1. Cause Doobies is right on the edge and. We share the B1, because Doobies is right on the edge, and, you know, every time I'm there, I ask people where they live, and a lot of the time, people live in the neighborhood. I was talking to Counselor Sargent before the meeting, and made a comment to me about how, you know, you know, to get a special permit and go through the board, it's kind of automatic. And I just want to detail two non-B1 stories that happened in Ward Fives. One was the Japanese House. If people know about the Japanese House, there was a, a really poor landlord that owned a property next door, and I helped 28 people who lived in the area, and every one of them testified with something different in front of the ZBA, who unanimously rejected them to, to expand into that. And then there was a property where a developer bought a house on Cedar Street, which is actually right at the B1, and wanted to, because they had a big yard, expand, and the neighborhood got together, and 30 people did a petition, they all testified in the ZBA, and it was rejected. And I do think that our boards are supposed to, because they're volunteer residents, they generally are very reflective of what happens in the neighborhood. Okay? We're city counselors, we have at-large counselors who do the whole city, and ward counselors hopefully are sensitive to their wards. I do want to, you know, address some of the things that came up. I have a newsletter, I don't have as many, you know, people on my newsletter as Counselor Merkel or Counselor Marzillo, but I do have a newsletter. I do try to get the word out. I actually have the most, the smallest ward, it's very congested, I walk around the ward and talk to people, and some people bitch at some of the things I stand for, and some actually agree with me. But it's impossible to get the word out to everyone as, as well as we'd like, but we have technologies that didn't exist 10 years ago. And I think we do a pretty good job, and we've had some robust meetings about this. And, and to say that we don't like have a committee, like, think about it, like, when we had the joint public meeting, and then went to the planning board. And the planning board, I think, you know, whether people agree with their decision or not, they're really reflective of, you know, trying to control development. I do want to address a couple other things. You know, Counselor Marzillo, you, Chair Marzillo, you addressed competition. I was thinking about it, and I was thinking, you know, no one is going to put a VFW across from the VFW. And it kind of creates diversity when, you know, right now, Which's Brew doesn't exist, and if another restaurant wants to go there, it will be probably something different. No one wants to open exactly, you know, no one's going to open a restaurant that's exactly the same as the restaurant next door. Daycare, on Canal Street, we have a daycare between the transmission place and the garage, and it's busy, because everyone's dropping off people right in front, and sometimes I'm like, should I beat my horn? But we have a B1, if people know where Christina's Pizza is, that's a B1, and there's this little mart there called Friendly Mart, and I'm guessing most people in Salem don't even know there's a mart there, and they sell liquor. I will tell you this, if you ask people who live within three or four blocks, they all know it. They go there and, you know, get their lottery ticket, or buy booze, or anything in between. And I believe that if there was a daycare on that area, it would service a lot of people who have families in, in, you know, multifamily buildings. I also want to address the assumption that all liquor licenses, you know, require a 1:00 AM or later, because these are things that the city can control. You know, we are not going to, as a city council, do a home rule petition for someone that doesn't make sense. I want to say, you know, Counselor Sargent, when he was a counselor, spoke against the Jaho's on Loring Ave, getting a license, a home rule petition, when the Jaho's in Canal Street did, it was offered at the same time. And, and the reason that I'm going to vote for this is, or the reasons is this, it's limited to certain uses. There are size differentials here. I don't want a grocery, another grocery store, you know, in a neighborhood, I mean, a supermarket. But if you go down, you know, Palmer Street or something, and you see the bodegas, those are serving things that a supermarket won't. They might be cultural. I also feel like we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that this is not circumventing the same process that every business has to go through, including the permitting through, you know, the, the building department and the plumbing department and all those things. And I actually think, to address one of the issues about traffic and congestion, I think this will alleviate some of that. I think the idea is that people don't necessarily have to get in their car and say, oh, you know, go to this place, because maybe I can just go outside and walk to it, and that would be a good thing for safety. And I think that there's a vibrancy. I used to live in Cambridge and Somerville, and for five years, I didn't have a car. And I drive around everywhere now, because I have to, but I could get anything, just by walking a few blocks, anything. I could even get on mass transit, which we don't have, you know, just walking outside my, you know, house. But I really feel like, and I'm going to respectfully disagree with the mayor, I think looking at what exists in these B1s now, that would not be able to be built in a B1, is, is instructive to our making a decision. I think if Doobies went away, it would be great to have another Doobies there. I think it would be great to have a Friendly Mart on Lafayette Street. I think, you know, I remember when Milk and Honey was across the street, and they had the best sandwiches. You know, I'm just thinking of how we can make our neighborhoods more sustainable, and to me, this is a way to do it, and it still has all the protections that we have through the boards that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Marzillo. Not being a member of the committee, and I, I just want to really support what Counselor Cohen and Counselor Marzillo, the points you've just made. I think they're spot on. For a public comment, I want to encourage people to, that most people can't make meetings, to email us. Those are always really helpful, and I'd like to point out the many, many emails I've received this week regarding this, and most were in support and strongly mentioned the daycare, and as Counselor Marzillo pointed out, they're under six children. So if anything, it would help traffic, because people could have, right in their neighborhood, a childcare option, but that's a very small number, so it would limit, you know, the amount of traffic coming in. And they all mentioned, you know, the grocery store and all those issues. So we did get a lot of emails in support, and that is a great, great way to reach out, and is, I just want to support the points that were made. Thank you.
Counselor Hopworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to point out, because Andy's microphone is way up here, just want to point out, because I don't think it's been said yet, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but regarding the communication around this zoning change here, not only are there newsletters, and there's been communication out in that manner, but this was publicly posted with public comment when it came before the council in the spring. It was publicly posted with public comment when we had a joint public hearing, I think later in the spring or early in the summer. It was publicly posted when it hit the planning board with public comment. It was publicly posted when it came back before the council with public comment, and it was publicly posted again tonight. So I completely get that it can be difficult to keep up with everything that's happening in the city sometimes, follow Counselor Marzillo or Counselor Merkel, Counselor Cohen's newsletters, but it was publicly posted in the paper on, I think, five or six different occasions. And I just want to support the comments of Counselor Cohen, and perhaps do it just a little bit quicker than he did it, which is, I think that we have, and I appreciate everything Counselor Cohen said, I think when we think about healthy neighborhoods, true, we don't think of, you know, a Dick's Sporting Goods and a Walmart and a gas station behind our house, but I think we do think about things like a Wallyo's and a Tin Whistle, and some residential, and some small daycares, and maybe your accountant next door can work out of their house. I think these are all healthy things in a neighborhood to have. As someone who lives next to the B5, I, I appreciate the fact that my kids can walk out their front door and go to Good Night Fatty, or we can walk down to Old Main Street Pub and grab a beer. I think these things are things that are appreciated in places that we're able to meet our friends and have sort of that third place. And agreed, our zoning, I would love to have a group sit down and look at all of our zoning, because the fact that we're having to, to have these conversations piecemeal, I don't think is ideal, but I think this is a very common sense change, and I'm in support.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. I also want to just touch briefly on the kind of congestion-walkability conversation we're having, that, you know, both of you spoke so well to. You know, I think there is this perception that, you know, more businesses means more people, and therefore more cars, more competition for parking spots. And it, it's interesting, how it's, you know, quite the opposite, you know, when you look at the data and you talk to city planners. So, you know, I encourage folks to do that, but it also just, it, it kind of does make sense when you think about it, right? We're all getting in our car once or twice a week to drive all the way to, you know, Market Basket. You put a small grocery store next to my apartment, I'll gladly be one less car on the road, one less parking spot that you're, you know, competing with. You know, you want to get a drink with your friends, not only is that, you know, when we set up neighborhoods, you have to drive in order to do that, not only is that congestion, but it's also safety concerns. So there's a lot of reasons to support this. I think another one is leveling out our tax base, right? More businesses means less of a burden on residents when it comes to taxes, too. So, you know, I disagree with the perception that this is an example of putting businesses or small businesses ahead of residents, or kind of, you know, neglecting residents in the conversation. I actually think most of the benefits here are for residents, so, thank you, just want to say that.
Counselor Watsonville?
Thank you, Chair Marzillo. A couple of additional comments here. I also am in very big support of this, and happy to support it tonight, and in the main council meeting at 6:30. Additional comments to what's, well, it's well after seven, so apologies, everybody. But in addition to everything that has been voiced already, I just think, I want to make a couple of additional comments. One is this concept of bringing businesses into neighborhoods, and in the case of the B1, where we're talking about 2.4% of the parcels citywide, the reality is the B1 zone was built around businesses because they already existed. So the long history of neighborhoods where the B1s exist, being Bridge Street, the areas you commented on, Counselor Marzillo, Derby Street, obviously, is that we are talking about hundreds of years of multi-use, right? Where there has always been small business. And I think the important additional comment there, within that historical context, is that what small business actually looks like and means, there's, I'm, I'm struggling with this sense, this sort of unspoken sense tonight, that this is about some sort of big business coming in, or this idea of strangers who are not neighbors coming in. And the reality is, any small-scale business within the city that's going to be opening or is going to be run is probably run, if not necessarily by a Salem resident, by a small business owner local. And I will tell you that most of these items that are included, that we've talked about these businesses tonight, are owned by locals, and they are, they are our neighbors, too. And I feel as though it's important to, to understand that what this does is open up opportunity for our neighbors, not just to experience all of the viability of a, of a neighborhood that offers access to food, access to daycare, access to, you know, potentially internal recreation, indoor recreation, all of which is regulated, right? Has to be approved, has to be, you know, can be enforced if there are issues, like there are plenty of guardrails for that. But in addition, it opens up opportunity for the viability of our neighbors who may want to start a small business, right? Who may need to open up their home, you know, maybe they're a licensed daycare provider that can no longer work for whatever the reason outside of their home, maybe they're restricted to their own in-home care for a parent, and they can now open up a small daycare business and have, you know, five or so kids. And the reality is, like, I think about, I grew up in this town, lifelong resident, and I think through my 43 and a half, almost 44 years, and I am the product of an in-home daycare in a small neighborhood, in Ward Six, right? I am the product of someone who lives in the neighborhood that is, that has a B1 right there, and I, I daily celebrate that by, by, by walking to these businesses and supporting them. And I think that I have yet to hear in any of the opposing comments, examples where there are problems, where these, these exceptions already exist, these grandfathered companies already exist. And the reality is, when we, where I see the problem, is exactly in the case where you outlined, Counselor Marzillo, which is the loss of the Crosby Streets, the Crosby's supermarket on, on, on Lower Essex. I mean, we, we need more of that, right? The Daily Table has been a huge boon. When I, door knocked when I was first running for Ward Two, the number of seniors who live in our downtown, who cannot drive and who cannot walk to a food source, is a huge problem, right? We have a number of senior citizens getting their groceries at CVS on the pedestrian mall. That's a problem, right? And although that, that's not the B1, that's just an example of the fact that it's not getting any better outside of the downtown, right? We need to open up opportunity for access for people who are on disability, or who are no longer driving, or can only walk for whatever reason, or who need to earn some funds in their own small home, whatever the case may be. I only see opportunity here, and I, I, I am happy to support it. I think that there's a lot of shadow boxing going on in the conversations around concerns, because the reality is, there are guardrails that exist, and we do not have a history of problems in the places that already are here. So I, I don't, I don't know why we need to use that logic when the reality in front of us is more about beneficial, right? This idea of bringing cars in, again, we just all talked about it, like, the concept is actually about supporting people so that they don't have to get in their cars and leave their neighborhoods, right? That's, that's the idea. And the more opportunity we make available, the less likely cars are to come into your neighborhood, if you happen to have a B1 business, right? That now, that now meets these new standards, potentially. So I don't know, I just wanted to, to offer those additional thoughts, the context, the historic, the actual real historic context of the B1 and the businesses that are in there, and the fact that these are not strangers, these are our neighbors. And I just think that this opportunity and access is necessary. I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Counselor Presnisky?
Thank you, Chair Marzillo. Looks like there's point-counterpoint over here, so I think I'm going to take the, take a little bit of the other side over here. I was very much moved by the people that spoke over here, the residents, the people that are going to be affected on Derby Street. They came over here and they gave good reasons why they support this, but they don't support the way that it's written as it is. The B1 neighborhoods, which are located throughout the towns, were, were all painting everybody with the same brush, when in actuality, every single neighborhood has its own individual character, its individual needs, and the impact of this, the way it is written now, with a broad brush, with the same color, is impacting everybody a little differently. Derby Street, especially, we don't even know what's going to happen with Derby Street when the, when all the waterfront opens up, when the, when the wind energy people start coming in, when, and what we're doing now has to be looked at, what's going to happen in the future, and how Derby Street is going to be impacted by this change. And I don't know whether we can look into our crystal balls and understand exactly how this is going to change, what this is going to mean Derby Street. Derby Street is going to change. Is this going to work for the future of Derby Street, or is this not going to work for the future of Derby Street? That's one thing. And that's different than Vinin Square, and that's different than Jefferson Avenue. The, I like the concept. I think we need more daycare, I think we need more home occupation, and I think that separating this into, into different areas, and maybe having a little bit more discussion about exactly how this is written, is probably what we should be doing, so that we address each individual neighborhood, and exactly how it's going to impact each individual neighborhood. I like the idea, I just don't think that it covers, it's a, it's a broad stroke that covers everybody, and I don't think it treats every neighborhood fairly. So... So, again, I like the concept, but I don't, I think it just deserves more discussion, and I think we need more discussion on the way that it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to direct everyone to the definition of B1. There are already uses defined in the B1. So, when we talk about, let's use the Derby Street neighborhood because that's where the majority of the people are from tonight. And I will also say that we did have letters of support from people in the Derby Street neighborhood also. There were letters of support for this. But as defined in the B1, you can already have a childcare facility by right, you can have a commercial farm by right, you can have a hos, or sorry, a medical clinic in the B1 through the Board of Appeals, right? You can have, let's see, an adult daycare, an animal clinic or hospital through the Board of Appeals, you can have an arts and craft studio and workshop, you can have a bank, you can have a bed and breakfast, you can have a business or professional office, all within the B1, right? So, these same neighborhoods on Derby Street, all of this is already allowed, and it is not being proposed for any residential houses on Carlton Street or anywhere else off of Derby Street. I'm just, I'm just trying to give kind of a counterbalance. You can have a funeral home, you can have a general service establishment, you can have an historic building. Like, there's already so many uses, which is why the exclusion of a small family daycare, why? You can have a restaurant, but you can't have a restaurant with a liquor license. I get that we're like, people are afraid about serving alcohol, but it's just, we need to, to your point, we need to understand what's already allowed in the B1, right? These are very small uses to extend, to extend what's allowed in the B1 through the zoning Board of Appeals or just by right. So, I just want to put that out there. Counsel Presnisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you're correct, we need to understand more. We need, we do. We need to understand exactly what B1 allows, what it doesn't allow, and the impact that it's going to have on the neighborhood. I can, I can tell you, please let me speak, I can tell you that Derby Street, the way it is now, is because it's a B1. Now, years ago, before B1 was formed, Derby Street was a whole different, was a whole different animal, as former Counsel Arthur Sargent said. Now, it's turned into somewhat, one of the best pieces of property in the city, and highly desirable. And these folks are living on Derby Street with that. I just don't think that tonight's discussion, which is going to go to tomorrow night's meeting for first passage.
Tonight's meeting.
I mean, sorry, to tonight's meeting, should be just rammed through. I think it needs, it needs.
I have to, have to push back on this. This was not rammed through. We have been discussing this for months. We are under a timetable from the state. All zoning changes are on a timetable. You were all given the graph to go through the timetable. The second vote for this, if it does go through to, for first vote, is due in early September. That is why we're here tonight. This was not rammed through. This zoning code, this table, is available to everyone, including all the city councilors. We have been through a joint public hearing. I have to push back on, we haven't had enough discussion. We have had discussion, we have had the ability to look at these things, we have had the ability to reach out to the city solicitor and the planning department and the mayor. How long do we need?
The discussions that we've had, and we've had public comment, I have yet to see one person, one person come up and speak in favor of this. One person. I know that there's been emails.
So, you need somebody in person, that an email isn't enough?
No, it's not just that. It's the fact that we're making, we're making changes. We're making changes to the people, and I don't think that this should be a debate right now. We're making changes to the people, and it's the residents that we represent. Those are the people that quality of life is going to change. It's not going to change my neighborhood, and maybe not a lot over here, but it's going to change them. And I'm listening to them right now, and this is something that they may not understand and maybe need a little bit more discussion. So, for those reasons, I am not going to vote to push that through tonight, tonight. Thank you.
But, okay. Counsel Stott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this might be the first time I've spoken about this. North Street, I think, is a great example of B1 and a well-used case of B1 uses, plus grandfathered-in uses that are no longer allowed in the B1. I actually think it's similar to Derby Street, perhaps not as touristy, as has been pointed out numerous times, which is fine, but I will say, as a resident near there, I would not have been able to make this meeting, because as a parent, I would have been driving to the daycare on Highland Ave to pick up my kid. So, that's what we need to think about with that, like, the residents that are not able to show up to a meeting on a 6 o'clock on a Thursday. So, we need to be considering the messages that also come in via the other forms of communication. I just definitely wanted to point that out. There are four items in front of us tonight to revise the B1. The B1 that we all have available to us online, and that I have been reading since, I think this was presented to us in February, March? I forget when the, anybody, March-ish? So, we've had about six months to review B1 and what the available uses are in there. So, I'm pretty confident of reviewing what's in there. I actually have been reviewing it. I'm like, why haven't, weren't there more changes? But I am very comfortable and safe, especially with the use of home occupation, the use of family daycare. I mean, I'm very sad that the kitty coop closed, I hope there were more. The retail store, grocery store, I will fully admit that I have bought groceries at the, not 7-Eleven, the Salem Food Store. I have brought groceries at the Sitco, because I do not have a grocery store to walk to. So, I, everybody that I've talked to in the neighborhood, that would be a welcomed addition. The indoor restaurant with liquor use, we also have multiple ones of those on North Street, and every time I have spoken with somebody, they would say, hey, can we have more? Ones at night? That would be great, because I would love to not have to get into my car and drive downtown, because walking over that overpass is very scary. That's moot. So, I am in support of this, but it's going to be in front of us this evening, and as Counsel Marcello pointed out, there is a timetable, a timetable that is not new to any of us, a timetable that we should be well, well-versed in, and understanding how this works. I am totally gracious and understand that the public does not understand that, because it is kind of how government works and how a law is made and how a bill is passed in the city of Salem. We need like a little cartoon to describe it maybe, but there is a strict timetable and laws that need to be followed. We have done the bare minimum, I will say, of public advertising in the newspaper and supports, but as counselors, certain counselors have tried to share the information out, get the word out as well, but it's a, it's a hard balance. I mean, we're either not sharing enough, or hey, stop sending me those notifications, I don't care when the street's going to be closed. So, it's really a hard balance, but we do definitely all take those comments into consideration and under heart of what is a good way to communicate without, because too much communication, you just start to tune it all out. But I really, really, really wanted to make the point that those that can make public comment, please do so in any mode that's available to you. It's great to be able to come in here and make comment in chambers, but I also fully understand that it is not possible to do that when you are working and getting stuck on the train, coming back from town with our fabulous transportation system from the city, or shuttling off to get your kid off of daycare from daycare on Highland Ave. It's just not meanable. So, we need to be making sure that we understand the full perspective here.
Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, I was going to save this for the council meeting, but here I go. I've received many emails and calls from my constituents that reside in the B1 district in Ward 1, many who are opposed to the changes presented here tonight in this zoning ordinance. I believe changing this ordinance will not be in the best interest for the residents. Adding more restaurants and businesses to the neighborhood will create, neighborhood will create more traffic, less parking for the residents, loss of valuable housing, and that's all we hear about, is housing lately. A lot of the bars that used to be on Bridge Street are now condos and beautiful apartments. So, you'll be losing a lot of housing, noise from late-night closings and patrons smoking and vaping outside of residents' homes. And that would be on Carlton Street, because part of Carlton Street is included in this B1 zoning. In this historic 12-block neighborhood, there are 12 establishments that serve food and alcohol, and of those 12 establishments, six of those have some type of live music, live bands and DJs. Also, there is one liquor store, one convenience store, one florist, two coffee shops, multiple gift stores, historic buildings and venues, meeting places for community, multiple green spaces. This is already a vibrant community, and changing the B1 ordinance will be detrimental to this neighborhood. I believe this should be brought before the State Ethics Board for review. There is being introduced, this is being introduced by the mayor, and this is a business, there is a business that is owned by a member of the city council who is not here tonight that would benefit from this rezoning proposal. Prior establishment at this location never had a liquor license. Residents might reasonably think there is a conflict of interest and have voiced such concerns to me. Listening to my constituents, I cannot vote in favor of these zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Marcello, not being a member of the committee. Please, no. Thank you. I promise this is my last comment. I just want to put it out there that the reason I am in favor of this is because of the communication I've had with residents over a long length of time about the lack of groceries and everything we just said. And absolutely, there is no one-size-fits-all, and that is why we have a lengthy approval process for every single proposal. Nothing happens quickly. All of us in the council know that, and attending, you know, the different board meetings, that is the process that businesses go through. Nothing happens quickly, and as Counselor Cohen had pointed out, many times, residents say that that's not going to work here, and it is not approved. So, I do think this is a responsible change, and we have had a lengthy process already discussing this. And I think, yes, because there absolutely is not a one-size-fits-all, and not one thing works for every street in Salem, that is why we have such a complex approval process. That is the safety net for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. If you'll notice, I'm sitting at Counselor Andrew Varela's desk here. I am not Counselor Andrew Varela, because he is not here tonight, because he did contact the State Ethics Commission, was advised not to be here for this vote. I think before we start denigrating our colleagues for ethics violations, when they have done everything they were supposed to do tonight, Andy isn't even in this room tonight, because he didn't want to create the perception of an ethics issue, that he was here watching over this vote as this was happening. He is at home, he is doing exactly what he should be doing right now, and it's completely out of bounds to question him for what he did there. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I'll be not as brief as Counselor Hapworth, but briefer than usual. I want to address public testimony. I think it's great when people show up in person. But no matter what the elected body or board is, we never have enough public participation. And it's usually when we have something contentious. I'm just going to say that Counsel Presnisky and I spent a lot of time on the Been No Place for Hate Committee, and when we were considering the Sanctuary City Ordinance, we actually had to keep moving into bigger and bigger buildings, and we made sure that everyone felt it was a safe space and everyone had a chance to speak. And to Counsel Merkel and Counsel Stott's, you know, commentary, yeah, sometimes I have a hashtag and figure out how many people are for and how many people are against, but that's not what I consider my role as a city counselor is. It's not to quantify things. I try to interact with as many people as I can that reach out to me. I think I do it like 100% of the time. And I reach out to people who email us, and not everyone can attend a meeting. That's the problem. As Counsel Stott said, not everyone can attend our meetings, not everyone can run for city council. And I feel like, whether this passes or not, my job is to do what I think is best for my ward and the people who live in my ward. I think this is a good thing. I'm very respective of the fact that we have a voting process. I do also want to say that, you know, I get really frustrated and discouraged at the length of time and the number of meetings we have about things, and the whole joint public meeting thing, which we're going to have many more of, really is a great way to involve the public. It really is. It gives people multiple opportunities. So, I don't want to say that, you know, one, as Counsel Stott said, one means of presenting peoples, you know, expressing themselves is more important or less than the other. It's not. It's incumbent on us to interact with our constituents the best we can and make decisions that we think is right. And, and, and so I think, you know, I do also want to say that, to the point about Counsel Varela, he went through a process through the Historical Commission, the zoning board, and he is permitted to have a restaurant and distillery on his process.
We're not talking about specific.
I'm just saying that, you know, to Counsel Hapworth's point, he specifically recused himself as I have and other counselors have, when something may affect us. And so, I really think that, you know, this was not put up by a counselor. And, and once again, you know, because I've spoken twice, I am going to vote for this if it comes in front of the council.
Counsel Watsonville.
Thank you, Counsel Marcello. I take grave issue with the comments that have been made about one of our colleagues today, and I just want to go on the record and say that. I think that it's a fair concern for the, for the public to want, to hold all of us to accountability, and there are absolutely ways to ensure that we are being held accountable and that we are holding ourselves to a high standard. And I just think that, that, don't appreciate the divisive nature of the comment that was made. But having been said, I would also like to add that from my count, I have approximately at least 17 emails in support of this from residents in the last seven days, maybe less, eight of which I have counted as coming from Ward 1 Derby Street neighborhood. I have five comments opposed, well, four, four and a half. I assume Mr. Draper's comment was potentially a negative, he didn't state that, but when he got up. So, we have five no's, and we have 17 or more yeses from residents, the majority of which are from Ward 1. So, if we're going to sit here and say that we represent our residents, then I think it should be done so accurately and according to the numbers that we've all received. There may be more communications, I have no doubt about that, but I would like the public to know what we, as a full council, have received. What we, as a full council, have received is, as I stated, a strong majority in support, many of which have come from the Derby Street Neighborhood Association, or not association, apologies, neighborhood. Now, that having been said, I have a question through you to the counselors that have raised concerns tonight. Specifically, what about our guardrails are not sufficient enough for their comfort and confidence in the process? So, where we have a zoning Board of Appeals, which would have to approve the majority of the changes, this potential business changes tonight, where we have a licensing board that can, can either approve or deny the distribution of liquor in these establishments and control time, use, all of that. And we have a robust and well-respected CIU that works directly with problem business owners, problem properties in town, and are excellent at enforcement. I would like to hear from them a better explanation as to why our ZBA, our licensing board, and our community impact unit do not provide them the confidence and comfort to support this tonight. Anyone else? So, I will, just to get us back on track, to wrap this up, we need to amend the, what we have in front of us by adding the word indoor before commercial recreation. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. Am I doing one motion?
One motion for?
To accept with the amended language?
No, first we need to amend it.
Okay. Okay. So, I move that we add the language.
Just adding the word "indoor" before "commercial recreation" in part A. Sorry.
I move.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Second, and my Counselor Watsonville. All those in favor on Ola? All those opposed? Okay, the matter carries 4 to 1. And again, that was just the amendment to clarify that it's indoor commercial recreation as opposed to both indoor and outdoor. Okay. So, now we have the full amendment. Are there any other, or the full package? Are there any other amendments that anyone would like to make? Or motions?
Counselor Cohen.
I move that we refer this to the full council with a positive recommendation as amended.
Seconded. Counselor Cohen moves that we refer this as amended to the full council with a positive recommendation for first passage, seconded by Counselor Davis. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries 4 to 1. I will take one more motion.
Counselor Watsonville.
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Watsonville, motions to adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries 5 to 0. Thank you. And we will be starting the special city council meeting in just a few moments.